Okay, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hi.
Welcome to the Halifax Board of Selectmen's regular meeting on Tuesday, July 10, 2018. And we will begin the meeting by a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep. I just want to remind everybody that we are being recorded by a local Area 58.
Tom does this part so much better than I do.
And you can be seen on YouTube or on Channel 15. Yeah. So if you want to copy this, that's where you want to go.
Get your DVR.
Get your DVR, yeah.
Edit me out of it, okay?
Get your little thumb dry. Okay, so we're going to begin the evening with the swearing-in of Michelle McIntyre, who's our latest police officer. We're really very proud of you. And it seems like just yesterday that you came before us and we hired you to go into the academy, so we all want to congratulate you on a job well done.
Thank you.
It's not an easy process.
You're here.
And we recognize that, and we want to just tell you that we're very proud of you and we're really happy that you're here and that you're going to be part of our community.
Thank you.
And we look forward to getting to know you. And if you have any questions, you know, you'll see a lot of us around. Yeah. Especially him.
Just because I stand out in the crowd.
So I don't know if the chief wants to turn it over to the town clerk. If you want to have...
Yep, no, I think we're ready to go.
So I'd like to ask Bob McGainer, our town clerk, and you can rise and you will be sworn in, and then you'll have somebody's pin you and we'll take some photos. Okay? So I don't know if you want to face someone, if you can see your family.
If you haven't got a pin, you can.
Yeah. We don't want to take the pin off.
Well, you can strip you of your pin.
So we're going to give a five, I'm stating the I.
I, Michelle McIntyre.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To and will uphold and defend. To and will uphold and defend. The Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And that I will fairly inequitably. And that I will fairly inequitably. Execute and enforce the laws thereof. Execute and enforce the laws thereof. Within the extent of my authority and jurisdiction. Within the extent of my authority and jurisdiction. So help me God. So help me God. I. I, Michelle McIntyre. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully and partially. That I will faithfully and partially. Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me. Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me. As a police officer of the Halifax Police Department. As a police officer of the Halifax Police Department. And I will obey and be bound by such rules and government. And I will obey and be bound by such rules and government. For the Halifax Police Department. From the Halifax Police Department. So help me God. So help me God. I. I, Michelle McIntyre. Hereby accept the position of police officer in the Police Department for the Town of Halifax. Hereby accept the position of police officer in the Police Department of the Town of Halifax. Congratulations, thank you. You nailed it. You did a real good job. So you did a very good job. Very nice of you. So I just want to point out that our police chief Ted Rogers is here, we have Sergeant Pat Sterling, we have Sergeant Ted Danner here. You all know them, I just want the audience to know they're a huge part of our department and we thank them for being here. And I think it's a nice testament that you wanted to be here to watch Michelle McIntyre. So, very exciting. So who is going to pin you today?
Who wants to pin my family?
You could probably do one.
I wouldn't want you to pin there.
Is there a microphone again?
Yep. Here's the pin, but don't hurt her. Because those people right here, they might arrest her. Or she could arrest her, doesn't it?
Do you have an X in policy?
Yeah. We do have one, I love an F.
Well, just in case, let's get the blood type.
Yeah. Actually, she could arrest her.
Didn't you stub, you did?
Nope, you did a good job. Oh, that's so sweet. Okay. If you want, typically, we would do it in front of the crest, so you can take a picture with the chief and any members of your family, the department, you can take pictures of us, you can do whatever you want. Or you don't have to take any pictures. So why don't you get your family up there? I'll help design.
Right in front of our selectmen, Ted Rogers.
Yes, I know. So we're going to...
No, put that there, it's about the cattle.
All right, so we're going to...
Yeah, let's move back.
I know, that's what I...
Would you like me to get a picture?
No, I got it. We want these to be nice.
Don't toss it.
Yeah. Yes. Okay, so first we'll do the parents, and if you want me, if you have your phone, I can take your, the picture for you. Yeah. So you can do just the three of you first, and then, yeah.
That sounds good.
And then we can add your grandparents. Give it a phone. All right. Can you just go a little bit, because I want to... Okay, perfect. You'll be glad that I was that picky. No, because these are like archives, it's a big deal. Okay, good. So do you want to do your grandparents separate and then everybody together?
Sure, that sounds good.
Don't worry, I've got you under.
Didn't you stub?
No, you didn't. I had my best time on you. You did a nice job.
How are you doing, girl?
Awesome. So do you want to get your parents too, or do you want to just get...
My.
So grandparents, and then we'll have...
No, I want to get my guys.
Yeah. She's camera shy, but I'll get you. Okay, so let's get all of you. I have to do this with my voice, because I'll like hold on a minute. Always glad that you have one.
That's okay, go with it.
Yeah.
You guys get closer than that, you all only go one angle.
Well, I'm going to do this, and then, oh, because I kind of want to get the flag in, that's okay. Okay. Now I'm going to have you take a picture with the chief.
Okay.
I know, you picked it.
He's looking good.
Is this the chief?
Yes.
Morning, sir.
Pleased to meet you. I have something I can tell you.
Are you doing something fun after this?
Uh, working tonight.
And then, can I just get Sergeant Danner? Good job. Get up there. I'm using, yeah, I'm using your... Let me get a good pack. Okay. Get a little closer, then, come on.
You're serious.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
That was awesome. Thank you for acknowledging. I do whole lot of... Thank you. Here's your phone. And your one and one... Thank you very much. I liked my...
Yes, yes, and I would tell Al, and I'd say, yeah, I told him, I was like, yeah.
But I know truthfully, you know what I mean?
Yeah, he would love to see him. Yeah, we're at the same house. Yeah, oh, yeah, he's doing fine, he's still pretty, yeah, all I do is...
So you're working a good night, weren't you? Three kids, all grown.
Training on the ice.
Yes.
Well, I know Mr. McIntyre. Have a good night. No, thank you for allowing her to be on our department.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome to stay on, Michelle.
Good job, Pam.
I'll see you, Rob, and not in the backyard, please. You know what I'm saying?
Bye, Ted.
Have a good night.
Steve, we're so excited you're here.
Are you here for a reason?
In case you guys have questions of the contracts.
Oh, yeah, cool, yeah.
So when we get through our regular invoices and such, do you have...
Yeah, 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 that way you don't have to kind of... All right, awesome. So Tom, would you like to do your thing?
Sure, do you want to do the agenda first and then...
Oh, yes, does anybody have any additions to the agenda?
Just that, hey, there are things on my list here that didn't make it because they've occurred in the last 24 hours. For instance, we're dealing with a earth removal project on Thompson Street as an example, and I need to talk to the board about that, so...
Cool. Could I ask you a technical question? Can we put the AC on?
No.
Okay.
Try the...
No, seriously, we tried turning it on and for some reason, it's not functioning over here.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Oh.
It doesn't mean a day off tomorrow, yeah, you still have to go to work.
It was warm in here today and I didn't know why.
Yeah, I'm going to contact, we've had it both ways. We've had it too cold also in the last few days over on the other side. We had it set for 72 and it went down to 66.
Oh, wow. Okay, all right, cool, yeah. So, Tom? Did everybody have an opportunity to review the regular session minutes of April 25?
Yes.
I'll take a motion.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Perfect.
Now I'm ready.
Okay, Tom.
I move to affirm approval of the following warrants. Vendor warrant number 119 for $513,916.46. Vendor warrant number 1 for $1,159,315.32. Vendor warrant number 2 for $214,109.60.
Got to love the first vendor warrant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the following warrants and commitments. Commitment. Payroll warrant number 120 for $125,664.31. Warrant number 121 for $307,832.16. Vendor warrant number 122 for $51,942.29. Payroll warrant number 3 for $121,205.36. Vendor warrant number 4 for $1,279,459.84. Withholding warrant number 5 for $82,461.60. Mobile home park fee number 7 for $5,160.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I move to approve the following warrants and commitments. Commitment. Payroll warrant number 120 for $125,664.31. Warrant number 121 for $307,832.16. Vendor warrant number 122 for $51,942.29. Payroll warrant number 3 for $121,205.36. Vendor warrant number 4 for $1,279,459.84. Withholding warrant number 5 for $82,461.60. Mobile home park fee number 7 for $5,160.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. We have the bill done.
I have to find them. Soon as I find them, I will do it. I approve payment, selectmen bills dated July 10, 2018. Greenwood Energy Vehicles, $2,593.18. Petty Cash for the selectmen's office of $50. Halifax Postmaster in the amount of $281.80. Town of Duxbury, I imagine this is for dispatching services for the town, $135,000. Maya Property and Casualty Group Insurance, $192,931. South Coastal County's Legal Service, Inc. for $3,500. CNA Surety Direct for $600. Chubb and Son, a division of Federal Insurance Company for $29,438. A note from Pam.
That's, no, Irma likes the red. Irma's like a pink, she likes her pink, no, yes.
KP Law for $607.50. KP Law for $2,115. Brooks and Durentis, $3,593.51. Attorney Lawrence P. Mayo, $593.75. Matthew Bender and Company Mass Law Books for $535.61. Brooks and Durentis again for $1,727.36. KP Law for $2,320.
A lot of legal fees.
KP Law for $2,320. Is that, is that the same bill, or is that two different bills? It appears to be the same one. Am I wrong? I checked the invoice number.
Yeah, it must be a copy that she had made, so I'm just going to stick it like this and...
Okay, so... Oops, there I go being diligent.
You need to sign every one of the other stuff on the left side.
Do I have a second?
Is he through?
Yes, that was the last one.
Well, I think you have your question.
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Hi, Charlie. Shall we address our...
7:45.
7:45, yes, so we got 7:45.
Oh, we do?
Yes, we do.
With Richard Harrison.
Yes.
The extension of the unregistered vehicle permit. Hi, Mr. Harrison.
Hello.
I'm okay, how are you?
Thanks for putting the fence up, everybody.
Can I just say about the fence? I know it's up, but I would have liked it to have been sort of to the side, because it's just like, it looks a little odd. That it's just sort of in the middle of the field. Do you know?
Well, it surrounded the truck where it does, that's where the truck was, like, or one, or one on each side.
And this is me, I just assumed that you were going to put it like somewhere in the property that, you know, was sort of tucked to the side and put the fence so it looked a little like...
If you're asking that the truck be moved, yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm, I don't know if I'm asking that, I'm just saying that it looks a bit odd. That's all. That's my opinion. Anybody have any other comments?
How long you think it's going to be there?
Well, until I can sell that property, you got to find someplace to put it.
I mean, like, I have more fence, so if you want...
No, God, no, that would really look even worse, to be honest. I just don't think it looks very good. That's just my opinion. And if the board doesn't have that opinion, then that's fine, but...
Well, I, I think we asked him to put some fence around it, I think he did that. I don't think we discussed whether he should be moving the truck or not. I don't think that ever came up.
Yeah, I just assumed, but, yeah, you're right.
So I guess the question would be, the sale of property is up to finding a willing buyer. What have you done lately to find another location for the vehicle?
Well, I was just trying to get my storage unit or something, but, you know, if that's not $50 a month, I'm looking like a, you know, a storage place. And I got a couple buddies of mine that are working on clearing spots in their places to move it, you know, like Steve next door. He's got enough cars in his, in his auto body place, you know, I'm thinking, try and find someplace else. And I've got several people entrusted in buying the property, so if that happens, I'll be taking that with me when I leave.
Do you think it's likely to be done in three months, six months?
Hopefully, six months.
Does the board have an opinion on that?
I would personally like to have something more definitive, but I can understand the circumstances surrounding it, how he did, although a little late, did do what we asked him to do as far as putting the fence up. And we didn't speak to any particular location, we just said put the fence up. So, at this point in time, I don't have any problem with extending it for six months, but I would be hesitant to extend it any further than that, if it should come up again.
I think I'm on the same page with Troy here. I was even considering three months, but, you know, six months, the fence up now, I was a little, got to tell you, a little myth, because it took so long to get the fence up.
Right.
You know, it certainly had thawed, you know, a while back, but, that being said, it's up, I mean, it looks odd, I don't particularly find it offensive, but, no pun intended, but, you know, I can live with the six-month thing as long as you're actively, and I assume you're actively trying to move the property, because obviously, the intent here is to sell it and, you know. Right. I'm just curious, is, is there sentimental attachment to the truck, or is this, or do you have something planned for the truck, or...
No, I'm planning on restoring it.
Okay, that's all I was wondering.
It's an old, it's an old vehicle and it's been in several wheelies, so I'd like to not get it going again.
Yeah, I'm just curious, that was just a curiosity thing.
Yeah. See, he's, he still runs great, because the body's a little, needs a little bit of work.
Sounds like me.
Right. Exactly.
Do you need a motion?
I do need a motion.
Go ahead.
I would move that we give the extension of six months to the permit, truck, one truck, located on this property.
Pam, the current permit, or at least the previous one expired yesterday, correct?
Oh, I see.
So we would extend it to January 9 of 2019.
Okay.
I'll second that, but the caveat that I don't, I would not be inclined to extend it any, again. Just, I think a year is enough.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm voting no. Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
So Mr. Hayward's in, there are, he had gone out to bid for three various road projects, received one bid for each project. The three projects are on various streets, hot-in-place, mill recycling, and rubber surface treatment. Second one is for crack sealing, and the third is for micro-surfacing. We got one bid unfortunately for each of them, and I wish we had more competition, but Fall State's asphalt was the winning bidder for the hot-in-place, and Seal Coating, Inc. was the winning bidder for the crack sealing and the micro-surfacing. And Steve's here, in case you have any questions about what those processes are, I don't know if he just dropped this here.
I gave, I gave...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it might be helpful if you, because we're on camera, just, you know, reiterate again what you told us in terms of what streets you had in mind here.
Okay, I have Thompson Street.
Oak Street.
Oak Street and Pond Street are going to be the hot-in-place with the hot road, Chip Tech, and micro-surfacing will be Cranberry, Headwater, and the crack sealing will be Elm and...
South Street.
South Street.
Do you want to take a minute and describe those two processes, because I'm sure nobody has a clue as to what they are, because I didn't, until you explained it to me.
Yeah, the hot-in-place is a machine that actually is like a train of trucks that heats the asphalt up that's already on the road. They mill it a little bit, spray some rejuvenation stuff into it, and it lays it back down, they roll it, and then a couple weeks later, we'll come back with some hot rubber, and then put the chip seal on top of that. And then the micro-surfacing is just going over the old road, like, same on your driveway.
Yeah.
And the crack going, going cracks.
Right.
And that's basically what it is.
Just wanted to explain to the, most people want to have a clue.
I'm going to put that on Facebook, so people can actually see what it is.
That's a good idea.
I know, I want to commend you, you've done a really great job about keeping people informed on Facebook, and I think it's what a nice thing that you also have area businesses providing coffee or different things to you, and it's really very nice that your department is finally being recognized as one of those departments that, you know, works weekends sometimes, or, you know, storms or whatever.
Overnight.
Yeah, overnight, yeah, so it's nice.
So if the board, I'm sorry, if the board would approve the order of the contracts for these three...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Who signs them?
There's nothing to sign right now.
Okay.
The board can sign off when I think this is...
Before we sign off, he's starting on my street, right?
I didn't hear that one.
I didn't hear that one. I did hear my street, though. Just saying.
But, yeah, Steve, you have the okay for them to begin work.
Okay.
Because we have the, we have the bids in hand and everything, that serves as enough.
All right, I already talked a little bit about this. Hopefully, end of the month, that's that.
Awesome.
Hold it.
No, 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 it's okay.
So it'll be done before school starts, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you, thanks, Steve.
You don't have to say.
Well, that is exciting, you might want.
So, you want me to start working through now?
I think that's probably a good idea, because unless we just want to take care of Alton Park...
Well, we have an official appointment.
Okay, so we do it, sorry.
634 Plum Street, the health agent had visited this property last week and found there was someone living in an RV on the property. My understanding is that person had been a tenant in a neighboring property until she had been evicted, and she hadn't been living in the RV at that neighboring property. The agent notified the tenant that she needed a permit from the building inspector, or else the owner of the property is going to have to obtain the permit to allow her to live in the RV on a short-term, 60-day basis. As of today, neither the tenant nor the owner of the property has requested the necessary permit. If, if either one of them obtains the permit in order to settle the property for one of the 60 days, one or the other will need to apply for a long-term permit with the board of selectmen. I'm recommending the board request the building inspector enforce the town's bylaw by date certain, not later than July 24th, so if a permit has not been granted by that date, that fines will ensue. And then, also, the health agent notified me that properties appears to have an apartment or is a two-family. There's a question of whether the property has the necessary permits for the apartment or two-family, and I'll investigate that further. The building inspectors indicate a concern the property owner may feel is a conflict of interest in terms of the property with the building inspector. In case the building inspector cites any possible violation of zoning by law, however, I'll research the matter before coming back to the board, because I...
Yes.
There's not, it's not so much going to be an opinion as whether, go back, check the building permits when they were issued, check the zoning when they were issued, is there any indication at any time that there was any type of permit granted for a two-family or apartment, check the zoning against that, and see what comes out, and I'll report back to the board.
Then in the meantime, you need a motion from this board to pursue the trailer.
Right. And I'm certainly, you know, I want to provide the tenant some, a little bit of leeway along with the property owner, but not too much in the sense, so they were previously notified by the board of health agent about a week ago, and nothing's come of that.
So you give them, you want to give them two more weeks or 10 more days?
Something on that order, I mean, it's up to the board to make that decision, to communicate with the building inspector. But I don't want to throw people out on the street immediately, but if they, you know, certainly give them an adequate opportunity to apply for the necessary permit.
Well, I would agree with Charlie on that, at least give them a 10-day extension for the one, but we don't hear anything, especially since the individuals we're dealing with, understand what the process is.
Yes.
I am shocked. Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'm going to recuse myself.
You, no, that's fine, I don't...
For, because of... For, because of.
It's probably a good idea. Okay.
I would move that we allow the resident in the RV for up until the day of July 24th.
My eye is twitching. Legit. I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll inform the building inspector of that. And also, I'll send a note specifically to the tenant, reminding her, basically reiterating what the board of health agent had.
Yeah, yeah.
Conservation Commission. They were meeting upstairs.
The noisy group.
Yeah, a little rowdy. Worth removal operation, Thompson Street, Gordonian Trues had notified the selectmen's office twice within the last couple of minutes, months, alleging a large worth-removal project had been occurring on John Peck's property and work had continued for a number of months. I contacted Mr. Peck on both occasions, he indicates some minor work under a thousand, under the thousand cubic yard exception, had occurred especially with the construction of his new home on the property. I sent him a copy application the first time, and the second time, he said he would send a letter to the board explaining the situation, requesting some type of waiver or variance exemption, as he was doing a little kneading up of the retention pond of the property. The property includes a number of acres of cranberry bogs with the normal retention pond, that's part of, you know, normal operations of a site like that. This morning, I received a phone call from someone else who had said the earth removal process was occurring today. I visited the site with the building inspector and confirmed that it was in operation. Mr. Peck was on-site at the property, and we talked with him about it. Mr. Peck promised to provide a note, which he's done, I go to the board to copy the note. Mr. Peck's note clearly indicates the total project amount to more than a thousand cubic yards. This is of course above and beyond the previous earth-removal currency it had obtained back in the nineteen nineties for the same site.
Okay, did you get clarification from an attorney whether or not?
I talked to town council, or communicated with town council today, and he agrees that the board could place a stop order on the process right now, until either A, a permit's obtained, or the board determines that a permit's not required.
Okay.
And what my plan would be is, before I leave tonight, is to write up the notice. I informed Chief Broderick that I would like an officer to come down tomorrow morning to pick it up and deliver it. I won't be here in the building tomorrow, in the morning that is, I'll be up in Needham, so that we just get as early notice to Mr. Peck as possible tomorrow. And then, you know, Mr. Peck has already received a copy of the application forms and such, and happy to send him another one. And then, I'll have to work out where we sit with the operation, if, in the sense of, is there a question of whether violations occurred or not and such, but I have to work out how we might determine that.
I really hope it's not a violation, because that is not good, at all. I mean, this is somebody who serves on our conservation commission, so that would not be a good thing. Anybody have any comments?
If, if we decide to put a cease and desist order in, are we looking for, are we looking for him to put their permit for the eight or nine hundred yards remaining, or to try to cover?
It would be for the total amount, whatever it is, because as much as he estimated the amount in the letter, my estimate is that it may be in fact more than that, given even the description in the letter, because he's talking about a certain increase in the size of the pond by a certain width, I don't know how many feet the pond goes down.
Someone's gonna have to do that calculus, right.
And even just looking at the material, I took a few photographs when the building inspector and I were there, it may very well be that there was a thousand cubic yards already excavated sitting on the property waiting to be brought out, let alone that we have complaints that other material had been brought out earlier during this year, so.
Is there a chance it's not a violation?
I, without the permit, there's, it's almost, I don't know, because the thing is, you'd have to have had a survey done of the property before any work had started.
Okay.
He's, in his letter, he's indicating that he's maybe has brought out a thousand now, and wanted to bring out a bit, you know, another, let's say up to another thousand. He would need a permit to do that. The problem is, is whether he's brought a thousand or more out, more than a thousand out already without a permit, and we need to get some survey work done to figure that out. I'm not saying it's impossible to do, but I.
It's certainly not gonna be an easy thing.
Yeah, and I'm not, you know, I'm not, I have to think about how we're gonna handle it to, you know, obviously, you know, I have to.
Yeah, how do you get down to the bottom of the pond to figure out?
Oh, there are ways, hey, that's almost easy.
No, I know.
But the start, the starting point simply is, if he wants to continue the operation, he needs a permit.
This is at his house.
Yes, well, the bog area is behind the house.
It's a large area.
And the retention pond, the retention pond where this work is being done is behind the house. When the cranberry bogs, if you're situated on the street facing the property, the cranberry bog's over the left, the retention pond is right behind the house.
Okay, I understand, yeah.
If you're thinking about where Orchard Circle is, it's closer to Orchard Circle.
I've never been down his long driveway, so I don't know. I can see the new build happening from this.
And the house was to the right, which is going down the driveway, and then fill it and then it's more.
All right, well, this is, hopefully it'll work itself out, you know? So.
Well, I, I would, I would move that we send a letter to Mr. Peck, ask him to cease and desist the operation till such time we determine just how much salt's been removed, and how much more he plans on moving.
I'll second.
Yeah, we need to keep things consistent, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
And now you're eight o'clock.
Well, hello. Sorry, we're a little tardy. It's okay.
He didn't bring any horses in.
Yep, Walter Wonder is here from Alden Park, and you are looking for a one-day liquor license for Fieldstone Farms, and I believe the date is August 19.
August 19.
August 19, yeah, and one-day beer and wine, two guests, everybody is tip certified.
The symbolist in already?
Yep, yeah, perfect. We have a sign-off by the police department. The fire department does not have to sign off on it.
No, he did, it's all.
He did?
I saved paper.
Oh, oh, there you go, sorry.
I got the.
I was looking for the signature under Ted.
Yeah, no, I have the original right here, so.
Okay, perfect.
Look at you being frugal.
I know, thank you, thank you for that. So this is for this, oh, this is for the silver old jump, oh, this is for the silver, yeah, this is the big one.
Yeah.
You did it last year.
We did it last year as well.
Right, okay. Somehow I thought you were on a different horse show as well.
Well, we're doing them all.
Oh, okay.
There's no beer and alcohol on.
The other ones, it's just this one.
Just this one.
You don't allow them to ride the horses if they drunk?
Correct. They did races last year on the road, on foot, but there was no horses involved.
Yes.
The only recommendation I would make is an additional stipulation, we're dealing with some building permit issues on the property. I know that those buildings are not being used for the serving of alcohol or such, but I think, and this is gonna come up later with the general use of the property, that the board places a stipulation that the two-story gazebo and the other unpermitted buildings.
Can't be in.
Cannot be used by anybody during the day of this alcohol license.
Do we have a list of the unpermitted buildings? Do we know which buildings?
I know it's the gazebo, I believe there are three or four one-story buildings that I can get from the building inspector to add.
I'm just offering that we should identify the buildings so that this.
This shouldn't hurt the operation for the alcohol, but it's simply a notice to both you and to the owner of the property that the buildings cannot be used on that.
Who are we issuing the liquor license to?
To Alden Park.
To the applicant, right?
Yeah, to him, yeah.
We do it under a big tent, they, they set all season there, but there's a big tent right across, right, I don't know if you've been to the property?
Yep.
Okay, so there's a big, about three fields in, right before the big field at the end is where this big tent sits, and we do everything underneath that tent. From what I know, they use that two-story building where Nessun goes in and does their filming or whatever, at least they did last year. I don't know.
It's gonna be interesting.
That's not me.
Yes, I understand that, I understand. That's why I was very specific that it wasn't gonna hurt your work at all.
So you're aware that you're crossing over a certain line?
Well, I, I don't know all the lines, I don't know all that, but I do know I'll stay within my boundaries of this tent, so.
Just to be clear, you're just doing the survey?
Yes.
Okay, it had nothing to do with the show itself?
No.
Right.
Yeah, I just wanted to clear that.
You're just a vendor, providing beer and wine.
Yep.
I think, I think we need to make it clear to the property owner, and we have to, I'm not confident that there'll be compliance, so we have to think about not, anything to do with you as to how we wanna approach, but we've got some time.
Well, and I also have that on the agenda, I believe, later.
Yeah, that was gonna say, okay, that's fine.
I would move that we grant a one-day liquor license to, for Alden Park for the date of July 19th.
August 19.
August 19th. To, to begin, what time do you start surveying?
I think it's around two is when the event starts, we talked about this.
Yeah, we put twelve, and then twelve, and so until five.
Twelve to five.
Like we did last year, we brought it onto the property that day, and we got it off of property that day.
Thank you so much.
For the hours from 12 to 5:00 P.M., exit and entrance.
Well, you may come in a little early, but we won't bring them out until at least 12 o'clock, and then we'll have them taken away at 5:00.
That's my move.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for coming in. Enjoy the day.
And then I'll, I can mail it to you, or there's a $5 fee, but we can, we can, you can get that back.
Yeah, give it to him, call me express.
We'll track down that $5.
Okay.
I'm not kidding, we are gonna track down that $5.
Thank you.
Right, Lenny?
Absolutely.
Lenny's on our finance committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lenny, you just here to say hi?
River Street, okay.
Oh, yes, okay.
Which, it really isn't much of one, I mean, I leave it on there simply because in case something comes up. Right now, for the solar farm, the solar farm's marijuana.
Solar farm.
Solar farm right now, Conservation Fact is meeting about one of the two parcels, and then the planning board is dealing with site plan, I believe, at least preliminary discussions on the 19th, and then right now, it's in the comment stage in the sense of it, there's a packet here for the board if they want to provide any comments about the second of the two solar sites there, and then I believe it's the first Thursday in April, April, August, that then the planning board, I think, has, is, at least, as long as I get quorum, will be meaning about making a decision on the site plan.
Okay, is there, do you know if there's any discussion or open forums for the public prior to the project?
Just, well, I would go to the meeting on July 19th.
Okay.
I mean, I know how informal they are, you know, the board has not, doesn't set up public forums for that, but they, you could ask, if you could make it, if necessary, if they wanted to be formal about it, you could say, fine, I wanna be on the agenda so I can speak to the planning board about the solar farm.
Okay, July 19th is just the planning board meeting?
Yes.
That's when they just.
They're having preliminary discussions about the site plan, and then the meeting in August, which would be, it's the first or the second, I think, of August, then that's the formal discussion.
Okay.
But I know that Terry, you know, necessary, make an appointment with Terry Rinaldi, who's the mystery assistant for the planning board, to, cause they've got, I believe they've got a time set up, but as I said, I don't know how informal they get in the sense of do we allow audience participation without notice or something like that. So give Terry a call, find out, either make the appointment if one's necessary, or just show up.
Okay, thank you.
But, you know, if you wanna stay around here too, you can.
We're, we're having some fun tonight, I don't know if you wanna stick around, you wanna go home?
No, I'm gonna go.
Yeah.
I don't understand that, we're such excited people.
I'm here more often than you imagine.
I know you are, I know you are.
Why should we be any different?
So we are on Cemetery. This is my friend.
While that's being passed down, just to review on land use council, as the board knows, we have been receiving some significant bills from a couple of our firms, they're dealing with land use issues and law cases. I did send a note to the departments asking them to provide me with a list of matters that are currently in consultation with land use council, or remind them, the couple on page is the town's land use council for all new matters in the future. I asked, reminded them to notify me about new requests for land use council, and that the board selectmen previously, a number of years ago, had given approval for the land use departments to use town council without waiting for a meeting of the board selectmen to approve it, but also I asked them to coordinate the requests so that the firms are not being opposed by several departments about one issue with all the repeat questions and the additional dollars that we would spend.
Yes.
I, I, I understand that you don't wanna inhibit people getting the work done that they need to get done, but I think they should at least be bouncing it off Charlie before they go off.
I think in general, they do.
Okay, I mean, even the questions, I think sometimes need to be kind of reviewed.
Right, but I have something I'm gonna bring up to you tonight about that specifically. I agree. The board, let's see, the board selectmen received, well, not for the board, but the beautification committee's in receipt of a $500 donation from the Fitzgerald Family Fund. The board could send a note, Thomas A. Fitzgerald, as addressed in Cambridge, thanking for the donation, and I received further correspondence saying the use of this donation specifically restricted to Fitzgerald Gardens, much as it went to the beautification committee, it's for that one purpose, not generally used by the beautification committee, and I know the town accountant's been notified, I believe the same, but so if the board wanted to send a note?
I'll move.
Absolutely, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ambulance abatement for May 2018, $26,532.58 for the board to approve.
Do you have a motion?
I would move that the ambulance abatement for $26,532.58, that's the board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have contracts to sign with the firefighters, the sergeants, and the highway department. I'm still waiting for one from Chief Broderick and Chief Agaros, I'm not sure if they were here, or still are here, but we'll wait for them, and also the patrol officers for whatever reason, so, we'll get to them when they come in, but those are ready to go. So there are two copies of each of the three to sign, and all board members signed those. And the board had previously obviously agreed to the wage increases, these are two percent for everybody in each of the three unions there. Let's see, registered vehicles, 65 Colby Drive, letter was sent to the owners there at 65 Colby Drive concerning registered vehicles on the property, I'll check the property here on the 24th. Powers and Sullivan, we have two copies of the audit contract.
Oh, yeah.
For the board to sign, in this case, actually, it's not for the board to sign, I don't know why they set it up this way, but the board could authorize me I had signing of the contract.
I'm gonna make a motion for Charlie to sign the contract with the auditors.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Tricked you guys, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
Some of the, the highway guys, they signed the way we supposed to sign.
They typically do that, maybe I need to give them more lines, I don't know.
Yeah, I think they need more lines.
Just for the boards, if the board ever wants to get a full understanding of what we owe in terms of debt, long-term debt bonds, and site share, the booklet from our new financial advisors, Hilltop Securities, we'll be working with when we do some bands later this year.
We have that.
Met with some town financial officials a few weeks ago to review the work they'll be doing, what we're paying and doing the next few years in terms of finances, and they provided this report also.
That's why we have Sandy.
Okay, so it's 8:16.
Okay.
And we have an appointment with their fire chief. My eye keeps twitching. Do you wanna stay there? No, it really doesn't, started with that first thing, and now it won't stop twitching. Do you wanna come down to the front, or do you wanna stay there?
I'm here, fine, I can talk loud.
Are you really worried about them?
What, why?
You worried about them?
Come on, Dan, come on, Dan.
Just.
A little comfy, but come on.
So as all of you may have heard, our longtime administrative assistant is retiring at the end of August, she's moving to North Carolina, I'm gonna miss her very much.
She's gotta be near her kids, her grandkids.
Yeah, and so we're a little warm, I think.
Just wait a little while.
My brother lives down there.
With that being said, I thought we're gonna look at what someone do, we have a relatively sharp period to train them, ambulance billing is one thing that immediately came to mind.
Sure.
When I met with the company that was hired to look at Plumb, and one of the things they were critical of Halifax about was that we still continue in-house ambulance billing, and it was for, mainly because there's no backup plan, what happens if our one person that knows how to do ambulance billing is no longer there, what's gonna happen then type of thing, was the biggest issue.
Excited.
Her eyes starting to twitch from here.
You know, knowing that there's a pretty big learning curve in that, I just decided to like, look at other billing companies. I know that most departments have decided to outsource that, there's very few that are still doing it in-house. Patty's been doing a great job, so there's no reason to look at it before. I reached out to the two largest, or two of the larger companies that I'm aware of, Coastal Medical Billing and Comstar Medical Billing, and asked them to just give me some, projections based on our call volume, our ambulance rate, and the demographics. So, they took the split of what percentage, on average, we looked at 2017 numbers, what percentage was Medicare, what percentage had no insurance, what percentage had commercial insurance, and we supplied them with all that data, and we just asked them independently to come back and say, "If you were, if we were to have you handle our billing, what would you think that we're going to see in return?" So, interestingly, they're fairly close, Comstar came back and they said, "Based on comparable towns and all that information," they estimate that they would have collected $675,000 in fiscal year 2017. Coastal Medical Billing came back and they said they estimated they would have collected $655,480 for fiscal year 2017. So, it's a significant number. We collected a total, I believe it was roughly $430,000 in total, so, it's $225,000 difference. So, I said, "How can that be? What are we doing right?" And they both told me nothing, you're not doing anything wrong. The difference is that we have access to the insurance companies, a lot of the, a lot of the health insurance now, people are opting for less expensive plans with large front-end deductibles. We have no way of knowing how to manage those deductibles. So, they have, you know, much more resources than we do, they're able to, from what I understand, watch when those deductibles hit and hope that they hit someone else other than the ambulance bill. So, what happens is, we dig out our bills out really quickly, and then the front insurance company is saying that, "Okay, Halifax Fire, you own that first $1,500 of the deductible." And a lot of people don't end up paying the deductible. So, they, what I understand, the reason their numbers are significantly different is because they have the resources to be able to watch and manage the deductible in that way, so...
What's the cost of the service?
So, the estimates are between 3.5% and 4%. It would go up to bid, it would go up to bid and have some...
At the very least, we need to do the three quotes.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that would be just on a basis of one year. If we did a three-year contract, we would do formal bidding.
I think we probably want to do a three-year contract, but. I have some draft RFPs I could go over with Charlie, something we want to look into. Roughly, you know, I just did some quick math, and it would, if, I used the lower number of the 655, if we deducted what we took in, it's $225,500 difference, based on the 3.5%, it's roughly $20,000 we'd be paying them to do it. So, we would still increase our, potentially, increase our revenue by $205,000.
If those numbers are to be believed.
That's the thing, I have no...
How do you know?
Interestingly, when we, two years ago, a little over two years ago, when we initially looked at ambulance rates and we made projections to do the additional staffing, I had projected that we were going to be somewhere in the $600,000.
I recall that, yeah.
And, for the life of me, I don't know why, you know, now I'm learning why, and they're, interestingly, they're projecting that we should be somewhere in the $600,000 range, and they're saying it's because we haven't had the ability to manage those deductibles and some other collection things that they do. We still, you know, I informed them we still have no, we're not aggressively billing, we're not going to credit agencies and things like that, we don't want people to offend and tell them the ambulance, and they took that into consideration when they, when they gave me the estimates. I would assume those estimates are high, but...
But on the surface, it looks like it's still a...
Even if the estimate was $100,000 too high, we're still making money.
Still making money, yeah, right, that's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's worth trying.
Yeah, I agree.
I think, you know, in the worst-case scenario, if it doesn't really work out, then the next round, we'll just bring it back in.
In fact, what I would recommend is that you do a three-year contract, but there'd be options for the second and third year.
Yeah.
So that we work with, you know, acne collections for a year, and then we look at it at the end of the year and say, "Did this jive? Did the numbers come out the way we thought they would?" And then we can continue with them the second and third years. That gives, either it gives us an option to go out to bid again and use somebody else, or bring it back in-house, but, I mean, you're only reducing Patty's, or Patty's successor's hours by, I think it was four hours per week, and that's...
So, that's the same.
Yeah, well, it is, except we're spending more money on the collection, but the thing is, we're not saving a lot of money by cutting those hours. In a sense, if it was a large, if we had been spending more money, that would be more relevant, but the $5,000 versus the $100,000 or 20, you know, $25,000 or $30,000, yeah.
Sandy, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. If they're going to be paid by a percentage of the revenue that we bring in, would we, would we still budget the amount and pay them out of the ambulance billing budget? Because our ambulance revenues are not in any type of revolving fund or anything like that.
I think they take, I would assume they take...
We have a special town meeting, we'll talk about that.
Although, I know, to increase the budget.
Yeah, but, yeah, I think we have to.
But that's what I'm saying, how do we do that?
I believe they take the money out of what they collect, so it's not like we're paying them $20,000 upfront to handle our ambulance.
No, but as the bills come in, we need to remit to them a certain percentage. They have to give us the full freight, and we'll, if, let's say they collect $100,000 and they're charging us 4%, we will send them a check for $4,000.
I think the money goes to that, I'm not sure how that works.
Well, it's clear...
I have little concerns about that, because that money should be coming directly to the town.
And that we pay them.
It's not like we're setting up a deputy collector situation where they add a fee to the bill and they get the fee. I'd like to know a little more about how the billing, how they would be billing us.
Can you check with the other towns?
Because we, we should receive all of whatever they collect, and then we should budget what we pay them, even though we don't know exactly how much it would be.
And when do we pay them?
We would budget on the higher side.
That's without...
They would bill us.
Monthly or...
Monthly, quarterly.
Whenever the receipts, whatever the receipts are coming in.
Right.
So, yes, we don't have any money, we don't have an account set aside.
We have $7,500 in ambulance billing account right now.
Well, that's going to, well, I'm not sure when in our contract, because we still need a portion of the ambulance billing money to, because our ambulance...
Right, that's sort of my point. So, we shouldn't be taking from the revenues to pay them, because I have, we're not set up to do that. We just have a revenue account where the ambulance revenues come in and go into the revenue account, which go up, go into the general fund. We don't, we wouldn't want them taking off the top of that. As far as I know, I'll have to make some phone calls myself to...
Powers, even now, we've got Powers and Sullivan.
Yeah, just kind of say, talk to the accountants, yeah.
I can send that email to the local chief, because this is pretty complex, everybody's...
Right, but a lot of towns handle their ambulance revenues differently than our town does. Some towns put them in revolving funds, some towns handle them differently.
So, the ambulance, just, because you brought up, that's a good point, the line item for ambulance billing, we're not reduced that much, only because, you know, by stamps and envelopes and that type of thing, it would reduce, but the biggest portion of that money goes to pay for the software, so, we have to have a conversation with Andy Stran, who handles our software, because that's also our ambulance reporting software. So, we still need to have ambulance, we still need to have patient care.
So, you need to keep that, so you need to keep that...
And we would get rid of the billing portion, but I don't know what, I don't know how, how that breaks out.
Well, let's, we'll take a look at that and find out how much we pay for that.
It's not like we haven't done this before. We just started having the department handle the ambulance billing about five or six years ago, prior to that.
A little longer than that, because it was before I began with town council.
Oh, was it? Okay, I remember, I remember. Bill, Bill was the one who brought it in-house.
Because we...
Bill Carrico brought it in-house.
Because we had had some problems with that, whatever firm we were using, both in terms of their collection rates and other problems, so...
Yeah, I built, Chief Carrico had made that, had made that recommendation, and I don't know if I was a slotsman or if I was on the finance committee, but...
Finance.
I know we haven't done it since up in the town council, which has been land use.
Okay, so...
We had, amongst the Plumbton County chiefs, there was an email circulated last week just asking, like, who's, you know, who's using whom for ambulance billing, that type of thing. Most people are outsourcing it, and only, there was one company that one chief wasn't happy with. Other than that, overwhelmingly, they seem to be very pleased with...
I can make some phone calls and find out, I would say, to the towns.
Yeah.
But that's, that's what I'd want, want to find out, how are we paying for that service?
Right.
So...
Conceptually, I think we're all on board, it's just a matter of working out the details.
Yeah, and what's great is, we have a special town meeting probably coming up in August, so that we could...
Right, and we could...
Be ready for it.
What we have to put in place, what's that.
So, you got two days.
I only need one.
I like that answer.
No, and Chief Agaros, he probably needs 20 minutes, he'd have it all restructured. Okay.
So, what do you need from us?
Do you need a motion to move forward?
Yeah, that would be helpful, Charlie.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you, chief.
All right, thanks. I'll be in touch with Sandy. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good night.
Charlie, you're back on, we have no more appointments.
Let's see, trafficking in forest services, I know it's, you know, a concept I was really familiar with, but I, the Massachusetts Attorney General's office had sent us some information, posters and such about this, I've distributed to the relevant departments, just so the board's aware of it.
I think you missed something, I'm registered.
And I did talk about that.
Oh, you did, oh, sorry.
Yes. Wage and personnel resignation, Erica Racini had resigned from wage and personnel effective July 1st, both accept them and also send a letter to her, "Thank you for your service."
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Line transfers, hiring wages to gas and oil, $8,811.59. Treasure clerical to treasure tax title, 800. Insurance to law, $3,492.73. Town building wages to town building expense, $4,000.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right. And these will need the board's signatures.
Yep. You have a lot of them, Charlie.
There are duplicate copies of a couple.
Oh.
There.
Okay.
I haven't done anything about the Bow Street property donation, I'll try and get, bring something back to the board in a couple of weeks, this is the one where the owner would like the town to accept a property, I just haven't been able to do anything with it. Council on Agent Post Tavern Project, official publication of the invitation for bids is tomorrow, Wednesday, July 11th, pre-visit conference on July 25th. Some bids are due on August 1st, general contractor bids are going to be due on August 8th. The billing committee will be meeting here, 7 o'clock next Tuesday, obviously, and we'll get the board posted for that, in trip as a quorum.
Charlie, this one doesn't have a finance committee?
Yes, because the 4,001, that came in at 4 o'clock.
Oh, okay, perfect.
We'll see what happens.
Okay, about the bids.
It's, you know, the primary reason why we need a special town meeting, which I'll get to in a little while. Police chief assessment center, I've gone out, and for the request for proposals, the deadline for that is July 26th. I'll notify the board as soon as possible about what we've got in. This is a request for proposals, meaning that it's not low bid wins, it's going to be something the board needs to review, I don't know how many firms are going to send in proposals, and how they want to, I mean, there's evaluation criteria set up, and we'll work out whether the board wants to refer to, somebody else wants to do all the review itself, that's not either way.
Yes, okay.
Surplus equipment, the highway surveyor has, I think it's 26 items, everything ranging from some kids' underground equipment to, what was it, crack filler, I think?
There's a whole lot of stuff on your list, I saw it, I don't know.
Everything's online, people can link to, from the town's website, midline, deadline for that is July 27th at various times late in the day. Everything goes through the auction site for that. We've done the highway contracts.
Highway supply review.
Site play review, this is the underground storage tank, they're...
Oh, it's a new one.
Right, and they were going to be meeting, Steve and the engineer were supposed to be meeting with the planning board last Thursday, they didn't get a quorum, so they're meeting with them on the 19th. This is just simply asking for the comments, so, my hope is that this will get resolved sometime later this month, Steve will be able to go out to bid, and maybe we can get the work sorted before summer ends.
Elm Street.
Elm Street property transfer check for $197,500 has been delivered and deposited.
Hold on, did Tom bring it to the bank himself?
Yes.
Did you co-sign it?
Tom's still unhappy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He wanted a different number at the beginning.
I'm, I'm with him on that.
Site plan review, 4/13, Plymouth Street, there are various comments from various town departments, they are going to be, I think we're going to be scheduling for the 24th for them to come in for class two, but they're doing site plan review with the planning board right now. What I told the applicants was, is generally what we want is the planning board to finish site plan review, but given that, again, they were supposed to meet with them on the 5th, we're meeting with them now on the 19th, I said, "Please bring the application and we'll get it set up." The board's not going to prove it without site plan review completed.
But we'll get it set up.
But we'll at least, we'll start the ball rolling, and maybe by the time the board meets on the 24th, they'll have site plan review done for 4/13 Plymouth Street. And then, let's see, we've got, I think also...
River Street, I think you already mentioned that.
Yeah. So, for River Street, that's the solar ray, another unregistered vehicle complaint, this is about unregistered vehicles at 24 Cherry Street, again, I've sent the letter, I'll check again on the 24th. Fieldstone Farms and Building Permits, last month, the building inspector notified Scott Clausen, who's the owner for Fieldstone Farms, he failed to provide the necessary documentation used, the structures that have been built on the property, this is a year-long issue.
Over a year.
Over a year. Allegedly, some of the structures have been used, in fact, we just heard tonight, in fact, at least, the gazebo has been used by ESPN a year ago without the proper permits. I'm recommending the board send a letter to Mr. Clausen as a follow-up to the building inspector's letter from last month, and my understating is that Mr. Clausen spoke with the building inspector earlier today, the building inspector provided Mr. Clausen another 30 days of waiting time to get this matter cleared up, but I think a letter from the board would be appropriate at this time, indicating that the structures, in the meantime, are not to be used, period, for any sort of reason until the various permits are signed off, completed, whatever has to happen. So, as much as the building inspector's not fining Mr. Clausen for fearing to get the paperwork and setup, we're saying, what, no fines, but also no use of the buildings during that period, too.
Now, is this in violation, or do we have, we have some clauses in our new agreement about the compliance?
There's nothing about building inspectors, the permits, but there is a general clause that basically says that both sides agree to cooperate concerning the health and safety of the people using the facilities and also the residents of Halifax. I'm not going to push that paragraph unless the board wants to...
I don't think, at this point, but I think down the road, we're going to use any means necessary. I mean, this is, this is an ongoing problem in that property, and for years, there's been non-compliance and, and, kind of...
If the board would approve getting a letter out to Mr. Clausen along these lines.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
So, the, the good news is, if Mr. Clausen could get the engineer to sign up on this building, the one that, I know there's other buildings in question, but if we're talking about the specific one.
The gazebo?
The gazebo, that if he can indeed follow through with what he promised the building inspector today, then he should be able to use that gazebo on the 19th.
He may have some difficulties in that, there's no handicapped access.
So, that subject did come, I actually was in the office during the meeting.
He just likes saying that.
No, 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 I just, I wanted to be able to have a nice conversation with Mr. Clausen about it, you know, so that I could explain to him that, you know, I thought that our building inspector and the town has been quite patient with him on this issue, and that it had been, the first letter, I think, went out in January of 2017, so I think that we had been extremely patient, but it's now time to address it because we needed to really come down harder on him. Anyway, so, I think the issue came up of the...
The gazebo and handicap access.
Handicap access, and I think the answer, and Tom, since you're so good at this kind of stuff, you can correct me, sometimes to the effect, if the public isn't really using it and just employees, can it still be used?
Assuming the employee isn't handicapped. I, I, I mean, it gets really gray.
Okay, okay.
And I think somebody needs to contact the architectural access board and pose the question. And one of the things about the architectural access board is they're very good about giving you an answer immediately. They typically have somebody on hand that will respond to you quickly.
Okay, so, we'll talk...
And also note to the building inspector suggesting that he in fact contact them directly about this, to resolve the issue.
Yeah.
In terms of that one particular issue.
You're right, I think that might.
In general, what they're.
Well, the general thing is basically get all the paperwork for all the building stuff. There's a question of handicapped access with the gazebo because it's a two-story building.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
I know it sounds a little weird, but I got a query about hemp production.
Charlie.
As opposed to marijuana.
God.
Think of hemp as the sort of locale.
Local marijuana.
Why does everybody love us for marijuana and hemp?
Because we voted for it. Well, this is where it gets interesting. There are now federal and state laws that will allow hemp production under certain circumstances. You get, in essence, there's a, the feds, while they are prohibiting marijuana still, will allow hemp production if you get various permits from the state for, as an agricultural test site.
Okay, so I am probably the biggest, you know, loser head in the room. Does hemp get you high?
No.
No.
Oh, so what's the point of hemp?
You can use it for industrial purposes.
Oh, like.
It's a material fabric.
Yeah, we can make rope out of it, yeah.
Hemp, they fly bad.
Oh, no, I just didn't know, okay, so it's not, it's not, it's not a.
No, it's a.
It's not addictive unless you like chewing on it.
No, but it doesn't make you high.
I, yeah, I mean, I was, this is where it gets interesting, someone, I was reading about it and someone said, okay, look, think about dogs. You've got all sorts of types of dogs.
Yes.
Big dogs, little dogs, okay. Marijuana and hemp are actually the same plant, but what's happened is people have developed, you know, in terms of genetics, to say, okay, I'm going to go and look for the marijuana plants that give the high. Hemp, on the other hand, doesn't do anything for me and I'm not going to use it for that purpose, I can still use it over here for something else.
Yes.
But just like you have a big dog and a small dog, they're still the same.
Descendants of the wolf.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I've seen hemp in like body creams and stuff.
That's that little peek and ease, yep.
Thank you for telling. Charlie, you're so good about explaining things, the big dog and the little dog, you know I'm going to pay attention to that.
So this is where the zoning question came up, everything I've read, you know, mass law, I think is, it's concerned agricultural product.
That's right.
Therefore, it is allowed.
Yes.
To be in grown, obviously, in the agricultural residential district, there, if, general these places, unless they're going to do outdoor, they do indoor facilities, I think the marijuana would, so they would still need site plan review with the planning board and such, just like, you know, lawn facility. I would like to, you know, this is what I've read as much as I can read about it, I'd like to contact up on my page, I'm sure this has come up before with them, so they should be able to give me a fairly quick answer as to whether it's simply just considered like tomatoes, it's, you know, it's allowed, site plan you'll need.
Tomatoes, tomatoes, marijuana, hemp.
Right.
Dogs, wolf.
Okay, so that's my plan, yeah.
Oh, dogs, that was going to be cool.
A complaint that got resolved, yay. I had gotten at the end of June, a complaint about junk, one Spruce Street, what I think had happened is some people had moved in, left a number of items out on their front lawn, then they got rained on, but they were subsequently moved after the complaint. I received the complaint, I confirmed the items were there, went back out a few days later in case I wanted to get the letter sent to them, by that point, outside the actual lawn furniture, everything had been moved out, so complaint solved, I haven't heard back from the complaint, and so I, you know, that's where things are on that. Just to officially have it on the record at a selectman's meeting, the boyfriend is not back.
Kim was left at the altar.
Yes.
Get a divorce and they're.
Not even divorced, she never got the ring. So the town plaintiff.
I could respond to that.
I didn't notify the town of Halifax that it's no longer interested in doing some, a shared services project with the fire department. This does not mean that we won't do mutual aid, for instance, we're continuing mutual aid, we may be working on joint training and other purposes, but they will remain two separate departments, there's not going to be a merging or contractual services or anything like that.
And we wish them well and we have expressed to them that we are here, if they have any questions about their standalone department and, yeah, we wish them well in their, in their endeavors.
With these stories, I really don't have any progress, but I really should check in with Rob about that.
Yes, I overheard something today.
I'll check in with Rob. Evergreen, next hearing on that is the 28th, Davis Automotive, the next hearing for that is the July 24th. I'm meeting with the traffic safety committee about Cranberry Drive and the possible sidewalk, right? Mr. Harrison has already been in, we're to meet with the board, we already dealt with the one-day liquor license, and then we get to the special town meeting.
Yay.
Yes. I've been talking about the need for a special town meeting specifically because of the council on aging project, the information I have from the architect is that, I was, I was saying we're just starting to go out to bid, but it's extremely likely that the bids will be more than what the town had budgeted, even with the various alternates that we placed in there that might reduce the amount that we would spend or delay, in essence, we put off doing X, Y, and Z, but the major things they put on the alternate list originally had been items that, the consensus at the previous building committee meeting was, no, we need to do these things, they need to be part of it. So it's fairly likely that what will happen is we'll get the bids in on August 8th and we will need more money for the project. So we will need a special town meeting.
My ask is that twitchily uncharmed.
Just to review in terms of the calendar logistics, the, we try, first half tax bills are due November 1st, which means they need to be issued by October 1st, it takes several weeks to go through that process with the collector and the assessor's office, and before that, we have to file the paperwork with the state, with the various tax recap forms. That means that any article that requires a raise in appropriate needs to be approved before we set the tax rate, before we send out the paperwork, which means late August for having a town meeting. I talked at various times about the week of the 20th, the week of the 27th, there's still a concern through the clerk's office that they will need to do early voting for the state primary, which is the day after Labor Day, which means they'll be very idle at the week of the 27th. In addition, both Dennis Carmen and Larry Mayo, town council, had recommended, or had asked that we have the week of the 20th because of their schedules. So, given the calendar, everything else, my recommendation is for the board to open a warrant tonight for a special town meeting on August 20th at 7:00 PM at the elementary school. I will inform the various departments, I'm not going to, let's say, encourage them, but I'm going to, because what I'm going to say is that the articles will be reviewed by the board's selectmen, and possibly what will indicate is that people who are interested with something else besides what we just mentioned with the council on aging should send a narrative or something in besides just, you know, oh, I'd like an article on X, well, this is not town, annual town meeting two, this is something, my hope is a short list of matters that we can deal with and get formed for that night. But the council on aging will have an article, if for some reason, we turn out that we don't need additional money, as much as there's a slim chance of that, that's why we pass over the article. We'll have a couple of the matters, one on dispatch center with Duxbury, ran into a communication problem. I queried them back in the winter saying, will our assessment go up? And they said, no. Well, I said, I thought that meant the net assessment wasn't going up. And what had happened last, this past year in fiscal '18 is that we had an assessment of 150, but we also had, they had a special state grant that helped to offset that by about $25,000. So I assumed that the assessment was going to be 125 again, it's 150, there's no state grant, but we only budgeted 135, I need to put in at least 15 and probably 20 or 25 because we usually end up with expenses down at our station here that in essence communicates with the dispatch center down in Duxbury. So that'll be a reason to have an article, oops. Yeah, well, we have, we're in better shape than, in terms of finances, we're in good shape to cover that.
Yes.
We'll be fine.
We are.
So.
Because.
Because.
Because, because, because.
Because you, you and your great wisdom.
No, no, I did nothing, I just, I'm just happening.
197,500, no, we can't spend 197,500.
No, I just happened to be in the room.
I know, okay. But there'll be a limited amount of money available to do things like that. We just talked about the ambulance billing, that may be another line item that needs to be increased, I'll obviously be working with Sandy and the chief about that, but I expect a short warrant, but if the board, sorry for going along, and we'll get to the motion if the board would move to hold the meeting on the 20th at 7:00 PM at the elementary school.
Thank you, Charlie, for picking that date.
You're welcome.
Oh, it's because you're going away. Oh, it's her birthday.
No, 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 no.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
There's a potential I wouldn't be here on the 27th.
Zoning bylaw committee, I did send out what's called a doodle poll, basically, it's an email to people using websites that says, here are various dates for having a meeting, please tell me which ones you can attend. One person responded by computer, one person came in, I heard nothing out of, from the other five members.
Any one of those days is fine for me.
Did you?
Not per from three.
So what I'm doing, so what I'm doing now, I'm saying a note to the members, saying, fine, I'm arbitrarily picking the date that at least a couple of people said that was okay, which is July 23rd, 7:00 PM, that's a Monday, and I'll let them figure it out as to whether who shows up, who doesn't, and all that. My, I'm not saying my job is done, but I'm saying my job, at least for right now, is done.
Yes.
And computer closet meeting, I'm going to, there's some interest in moving the computer equipment from the computer room that's here on the first floor down to the basement, obviously, work needs to have to happen, both IT stuff, but building committee stuff. The idea here is then to move the copier stuff down to the computer closet and then move the treasure collector personnel that are still upstairs down into the copy machine room.
It's the 24th, it's Tuesday, the 24th.
Okay, thank you. And.
And further rearrange upstairs so that we have an effective meeting room.
Yeah.
Move the regulatory people into, into the smaller, the offices and, and actually.
Make that a meeting room, meeting room.
Yeah, regain a meeting.
You're right, because we've only two people there, there's plenty of room for two people in that office, and that whole room can be then used for meeting.
Exactly, I mean, there's a room for three desks in there if you need them.
Right.
Wow. You guys play chess?
Got maternal anxiety, so I don't know if you want to do an email, but everybody knows. Oh, oh, you did?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't get it. Charlie.
I never get them.
Are you sure you didn't get it?
This all kind of gelled this morning.
Are you sure?
Oh, I just got it.
Yeah, amazing, isn't it?
It's 7:59 when I was here.
Not at 7:59.
Yes, that's when you sent it.
How could I send it at 7:59, I was right here.
No, you weren't, at 7:30 you were right here.
And at 7:59, I was still here.
Oh, 6:59. I'm tired, I had a good, I had a bad day today.
Boatwives are twitching now.
I got spirited at one point, I just don't have a good day.
You had a good day, when you get spirited, you have a good day.
And I have nothing else, I don't.
Yes, we do have stuff.
Road openings, live entertainment.
Yeah, so we have a road opening at 288 Oak Street to install a new gas service, it's a four-by-six road cut tie into a five-by-10 road cut trench, and we have sign-offs by all of our favorite people.
Which street is that? Need a police detail over there?
That is 288 Oak Street. I do not have the sheet.
Hopefully, they do it before Steve.
I don't have the sheet saying.
I was thinking the same thing.
Oh, it's right here.
Anybody, where's the girl, what do you want?
I don't, I don't have your sheet that tells me like, don't shut up.
Does the five-year restriction on any further road cuts apply to just road improvements?
It's affirmed.
I don't know what Steve wants to do, it's interesting.
The next one we're affirming.
288, we're going to approve, everyone that, we have, just one detail officer, everyone else has signed off, and we'll put that stipulation that we had agreed on for the highways there that we'll be sending every permit, this little memo.
Yeah.
Okay, and so, we're good.
Pam, could you check with Steve per Tom's suggestion or query?
What?
About, not these in particular, but to say, once the work is done, that he's doing on those.
He did put that in there, he just said, pavement is to stay in thickness, as existing pavement number, all work is subject to inspection by the highway survey and need at our discretion.
No, no, Charlie, Charlie's referring to.
What Tom's pointing out is that we're doing substantial work on the number of roads in Halifax during the next few months. If Steve is going to say, you can't do anything on those roads after I've done that work, not the crack ceiling roads, but the other types.
Because typically, when we do the road over, we put a five-year.
We do put a five-year.
So, but could you check with Steve and see for which roads he wants the five-year moratorium on? And if he says, yes, I want the five-year moratorium on, could you please contact the water department and Columbia Gas and give them a heads up for that? Here, we are slightly, we're going to get work done on those roads by a particular date. If you have any submissions for those roads, they must be in and were completed prior to the town engaging in that work, in which case, after that time, it will be until 2023 before the town will prove, unless, I guess, you could put an exception for emergency services or something like that.
And he may not feel that the work is extensive enough to warrant it, but we should at least.
But maybe he says two years or three years or something like that.
Right, exactly, but we should at least, yeah.
Groovy, so I have a motion and a second to that.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
And then the other thing we have is we are affirming a transfer of appropriation, so we're affirming a transfer from, we already did this one?
We did it after our meeting.
No, and then, yeah, but okay, so this is from the insurance account, and it's going into selectman clerical, and it is for the amount of $525.70, and.
Right, we had not included the longevity stipend.
Okay.
For employees within the fiscal '18 budget, for some reason, that never got caught by anybody, and this covers that.
So we just need a motion for affirming that.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
And last but not least, but we have a live entertainment permit application from Ken Cordy. So Ken Cordy, you know Ken Cordy?
Yeah.
Yeah, so his granddaughter got married a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and so now they're having a family party on August 12th, and the family members may bring instruments and play, but not an actual band. They're expecting 60 to 70 people who will be sober and in charge, Lorette Ryan, which is his daughter, and Ken Cordy, they'll be parking at 389 Home Street and 395 Home Street next door, and I believe the party is from 3:00 to 7:30.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Sure, so move. Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right. Cool, y'all.